Welcome to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission of April 15, 2010. I'd like to call for a roll call of the members.
Hey, Ann Brinkman is not here. Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Mark Dietrich.
Here.
John Dwyer.
Here.
Dean Gokee is not here. Dick Matthews.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Steve Chambers.
Here.
The next order is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
And moved and seconded, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes. Well, actually, I'm going to withdraw that motion since I wasn't here on the first.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 18, 2010 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Call for the vote.
Okay, and that motion, I didn't clear the board, but I'm assuming that you're abstaining, Mr. Bucknam.
Oh, well, the motion was to approve the March 18.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It passes unanimously.
About the April 1?
I move to approve the April 1 minutes.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Okay, and that motion passes with Commissioners Chambers, Dietrich, and Bucknam abstaining.
Okay, this is the time for the public forum as for members of the public to speak on anything that's not on the agenda for up to three minutes.
And we do not have anybody signed up.
No one has signed up. Okay, then we can go right into the public forum or the public hearing for case number WZ-08-05, an application filed by Danielle Deering for approval of a zone change.
For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And I will tell the truth. Case number WZ-08-05 is an application for a zone change from A1 to planned commercial development and for approval of a conceptual outline development plan. Subject property is 4859 Miller Street, currently zoned A1, Agriculture 1. Current land use would include vacant property and miscellaneous outbuildings. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. This property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge and it has been posted and published. Owner's notification has occurred, therefore, Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Okay. This first slide I'm showing is an aerial photograph of the property. Just to help orient you, north is at the top. Miller Street is over on the very eastern side, which would be the right hand. And on the south, to the south, is the West I-70 frontage road north. The property in question, located at 4859 Miller Street, comprised of two parcels and extends about 500 feet west of the west line of the Miller Street right-of-way. The total size of the two parcels, Parcels A and B, is about 1.88 acres. The western parcel is devoid of any structures. There is a portion of it that has been paved, that would be the southern portion, and you can see it's currently being used for the parking of vehicles. The eastern parcel has several buildings on it. There is a house structure, which I believe is this right here, which does appear to be currently occupied, and some miscellaneous outbuildings. You can see in the picture those are still on the site. And the front portion of the property has been covered with road base. The current zoning on both of these parcels is Agriculture 1. Agriculture 1 is sort of a heritage zone district that was a remnant left over from Jefferson County, historical uses in the city of Wheat Ridge. It is truly an agricultural zone district that allows single-family residential dwellings and general farming operations, greenhouses, and so on. The parking of equipment implements, machinery, and trucks is allowed only as an ancillary use to an agricultural type of activity. The property that we're looking at tonight is closely related to two adjacent parcels to the south, and part of the intent of the zone change is to allow expansion of those two uses onto this piece of land, which is currently zoned A1. The eastern parcel to the south is an existing vehicle sales lot addressed as 4855 Miller. And the western piece to the south is currently used as auto body repair, vehicle repair. It's called ABRA. That is zoned PID. The eastern parcel, the vehicle sales lot, is zoned C1. The existing sales lot, which again is to the south on this side, if I can find my cursor over in this location, is currently non-conforming to many of the provisions of the Wheat Ridge zoning code. The first piece that, of course, we look at is use. Vehicle sales lots are a special use in the C1 zone. There was never a special use for it granted for the property, which, according to my research, has been used at least partially that way since about 2001. The commercial vehicle sales standards in the zoning code do require a 1,500-foot separation between adjacent vehicle sales lots. There is a mistake in this piece of the report. The closest lot that I am aware of is the Midbed Auto Plex, and I believe it's 1,600 feet away instead of 600. So I just wanted to make that correction. The second portion or component of the property that is non-conforming is the landscaping on the site. The current standard for all commercial properties within the city of Wheat Ridge is a 20% landscape coverage. There are also 10-foot buffer requirements along street rights-of-way, and in addition to that, there are also standards for vehicle sales lots, including a certain number of islands per, I believe it's every 30 vehicles being displayed. Up until 2008, the parking area was not paved. It was paved in 2008 and a perimeter strip of landscaping put in based on code enforcement negotiations between the property owner, the tenant, and city staff. I was out there today, and it does appear that much of that landscaping that was installed is dead. The final thing is that the structure, that's on the property, which is at the southwest corner of the site, does not meet the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Technically, we didn't adopt that manual until 2007, and that structure was well in place before then. The property that is just to the west, which is the ABRA Auto Repair Facility, is zoned planned industrial development, and it does appear that the front portion of the property is being used in compliance with that zoning on the property as far as building layout. The building's about 20,000 square feet. This is a planned development that I think was approved back in the '70s, so typically there's a little bit less landscaping than we would see according to today's standards. The applicant is requesting the zone change approval to allow the interim use by the two adjacent businesses until the property can be permanently developed. Now, because of that, they are proposing minimal improvements just really on this eastern parcel, and I'll get into that a little bit more. One of the things that staff has a little bit of consternation of is the term interim uses. Usually, an interim use is something that is truly a temporary situation until the property can be permanently developed. The problem we have with those is a lot of times interim uses end up being long-term uses with no way for staff to enforce it, and that's the situation that we foresee happening potentially on this site. I believe the ODP document does indicate that it would be from five to 10 years, but once again, there's no way, it's very hard for staff to enforce anything like that, even though it is a recorded document. When we originally started talking to the applicant, which was in the early 2000s and then more formally starting in about 2005, we did indicate that because the existing vehicle sales lot to the south is an illegal, non-conforming use, that we would prefer and recommend that they bring all of the property into one or at least these three parcels so that we could do a full comprehensive zone change on it, get some improvements on that southern lot, and allow them to do the expansions onto the northern portion. Typically, we would support a commercial zone change in this area because it is primarily planned industrial development, a lot of commercial uses. However, we do object to this piecemeal approach. We do not feel that it provides a benefit to the city. And again, there have been a lot of dealings through code enforcement on the property. And finally, this applicant, application would represent expansion of an illegal, non-conforming use, and again, the applicant did not follow our recommendation. Okay, let's take a look at some slides of the property. This is the piece that's located at 10501 West I-70 Frontage Road north. It's the ABRA Auto Body and Glass Shop. In, I want to say, 2009, they did some recent upgrades to the building, which turned out very attractive. They put these facades on and did some improvements to the signage and so on. This is the vehicle sales lot, which is technically addressed as 4855 Miller Street. That's the existing structure that's on the property. This is standing on Miller Street looking west, again, at that existing sales lot. This is now, I'm standing on the west side of Miller looking east. This building that's right across the street from them is the American Motel. This is the property directly to the north, 4955 Miller Street. It is an office warehouse-type facility, straight block building. The property line between the existing vehicle sales lot and the piece being rezoned is right about at this location, and you can see that existing small house on the property and then the two other outbuildings included. Just looking back into the interior of the site looking west. Now I'm standing about halfway into the property, looking, again, west. This structure you see right here, I believe, is part of the ABRA facility. This is looking to the southwest, again, the ABRA facility. And again, that property line between the two is right behind the building. This is some of that A1 zone property that's under consideration. And this is looking at the rear of the vehicle sales property. Again, this is one of those outbuildings that's on the A1 piece, so I would guesstimate to think the property line would be somewhere right in here. They have presented Planning Commission an outline development plan, which is comprised of two sheets. The first sheet is the declaration page. It's got the legal description on it. It has the certification blocks and all the correct signatures. It does indicate that this is an interim use, if you've read the language on it, and upon a permanent development scenario, staff would note that the applicant would have to come back through the process, go back through the ODP process, to establish the new uses and the basic layout of the property. Until that time happens, the ODP document does indicate that the only uses allowed on the property would include vehicle storage, sales, and display as ancillary to those two adjacent properties, and they have included development standards under, I believe it's under the notes, that relate back to the various sections of the zoning and development code for landscaping, signage, and so on. That's pretty typical. The second sheet is a site plan for the property, and really, it really is addressing the new situation on the eastern parcel. They're showing Parcel B as keeping that existing pavement on it, sort of an as-is condition. The modifications that are proposed for Parcel A, which is the eastern parcel again and would be an extension of the car lot, would include removal of all those structures on the property. They'd pull up this road base and replace it with an asphalt-type material. They also will be required to do a storm, stormwater treatment in this area. They're also proposing some landscape improvements. I believe it includes a 10-foot wide buffer strip along the Miller Street frontage with the appropriate number of trees and some bushes, and then one interior landscaped island based on the number of vehicles that would displayed. And I would note that if this plan is approved, all commercial landscaping does need to be irrigated, and we would require them to install irrigation, and that would be a note we would want to add to the plan. There currently is, they are not currently showing any access to Miller Street. I did speak with the, or, excuse me, the Arvada Fire Protection District. They did indicate that they would need some emergency access, and so, again, if this plan is approved, their requirements for access would have to be accommodated, essentially a 24-foot wide unobstructed path with hard surfacing. Typically, it's gated or something, so there's not regular access. I think that there are a couple points I'd like to go into quite a bit of detail about. First, the first one is the comprehensive plan, which, as you're aware, was adopted in October of 2009, so it's a fairly new document. And because of that, I've included the page that's called the Structure Plan, which is kind of the land use component of the plan. The site is located in this purple area right here, and it is designated as an employment area. Now, the employment areas in the plan, for the definition, are described as existing light manufacturing, storage, warehouse, and other industrial-related uses. And I would point out that while the car lot really isn't truly an industrial use, it is an employment-based type of operation, and so therefore, it would be somewhat consistent with that designation on the plan. In August of last year, City Council adopted a new urban renewal plan, and it did include quite a bit of the I-70 corridor, including the property in question. There was a BLIT study that was conducted and with the conclusion that the following items are present in the study area: slum/deteriorated structures, predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, faulty lot layout, and so on and so forth. And the, one of the other things that they point out for this general area is that there's a high level of municipal service, including code enforcement responses. And finally, that the BLIT study says that these conditions of BLIT substantially impair or rest the sound growth of the municipality or constitute an economic or social liability. Again, on the urban renewal land use plan, it's shown as employment, and so generally, the zone change would fit within that. But I would like to identify a couple more goals that are called out, both in the comp plan and are supported by the urban renewal plan, and those are: that new development or redevelopment shall be designed so as to be a positive contribution to the entire community and compatible with surrounding uses; that new development should be conveniently located and attractive to accommodate commercial office and service uses, meeting the needs of the city; that any development or redevelopment shall be reviewed with extraordinary attention to citing orientation scale, mix, and compatibility of uses; and that, finally, the new development should preserve and enhance the community's tax base. Again, while the plan and the proposal generally to rezon the property to PCD is consistent with that employment designation on both the comp plan and urban renewal plan, in my mind, it just doesn't embrace the high quality of design that's expected by both of those The second thing that I'm showing, and this was included in your packet as well, this is generally the Kipling and West 50th corridor, and let me just help orient you. Again, the I-70 Service Road is down here on the south end. We've got Kipling over on the east. This is 50th Avenue. Subject site is outlined in red. What we're trying to show here is with this yellow hatch pattern, is really, these are properties that we've seen fairly substantial commercial investments in the last five years, maybe a little bit longer than that, maybe the last seven years. This, of course, is the Arvada Ridge development in the city of Arvada, which continues to develop commercially. This is the Target Store and then some of their pad buildings. If you'll remember, there is a TOD, Transit Stop, on the north end of this property that will be built within the next five years. Some of the other commercial development in the city includes the Sanders Plumbing Supply. They did a fairly major addition within the last five years or so. These are a couple new retail. This has got, this is a shopette that's got an Italian restaurant in it. This is an auto supply sales. This is a little strip that's got a Starbucks in it. And there are a variety of land uses in the area. I mean, surrounding the property, we've got an office warehouse to the north. We've got the motel across the street to the east, also zoned commercial. We've got commercial basically surrounding the property. And I guess the whole point of this exercise in this mapping is to show that we have seen substantial improvement in the area, and we expect that to continue. And staff really feels that the pieces that are under consideration for zoning have been somewhat unmaintained, and there has been little investment in them by the property and business owners. And while the, again, the commercial zoning isn't incompatible with the surrounding uses, but it does, it is being proposed with minimal investment. It allows for the expansion of an existing illegal, non-conforming use. We just don't see that unless the whole property is brought in under a zoning application. There's improvements made to all of it. It really provides no benefit to the city. Because this is a zone change, we must take a look at the evaluation criteria that's listed in the zoning code, and I'm not going to go through it in detail, but some of the conclusions we've drawn is there are changed conditions in the area due to completion of 50th Avenue with Arvada Ridge, and that's been a catalyst for new construction on the Wheat Ridge site as well. That the property is shown as employment on the comp plan structure map, and it's located in the new urban renewal area and also supported for that employment land use. Again, it's not incompatible with the adjacent zoning and land use, but there are minimal improvements proposed, which results in minimal benefit to the city. It results in the expansion of an illegal, non-conforming use. There are minimal infrastructure improvements required to serve the current proposal at the time of future redevelopment. Of course, they would have to deal with water and sanitation and all those typical utilities. There's also minimal impact on traffic drainage and the amount of light and air because there are minimal improvements proposed. And finally, that we really can't do any analysis based on the Architectural and Site Design Manual because there's no new building construction proposed. Agency referrals, Arvada Fire Protection District has indicated that they do need an emergency access, 24 feet in width and hard surface from Miller. Valley water can serve the interim situation. Upon permanent development, additional lines, mine lines, I think that's supposed to say main lines, hydrants and fire lines would need to be installed when the property is developed. Public Works has approved a drainage letter for the new portion of the paving on the eastern side of the property. No additional right-of-way would be needed for Miller at this point. The legal description has some problems, which would need to be revised if this is approved. Wheat Ridge Police Department can serve the property. And finally, Renewal, Wheat Ridge, which is the urban renewal entity for the city, will review this at their April 20 meeting prior to the City Council hearing. We did have a neighborhood meeting on May 20, the 2008, and there were no people in attendance other than the owner, the tenant, and their consultant. Staff has drawn the following conclusions. Number one, that the proposed investment in the property is minimal with this application, that it does result in the expansion of an illegal, non-conforming use. Again, minimal investment proposed with commercial land use entitlement, and there, quite honestly, is little benefit to the city if you think back of how vehicle sales work. We don't accrue any sort of sales tax unless the person buying the vehicle lives in the city of Wheat Ridge, so even the economic benefits are very minimal. And finally, that the application would result in an incremental zone change without bringing adjacent property into conformance, and for these reasons, we are given a denial recommendation. So that does conclude the staff report, and I would be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Ann?
Meredith? Hi. We received a letter from Kathy Field.
Yes.
Was that right into the, was that included as part of the packet?
I need to enter that into the record. Thank you for reminding me. If people don't have a copy of this, I've got extras. Okay, so.
So do you have to officially enter it?
Yes, enter it in. Madam Secretary, please enter this into the record, the case, the case record.
So my second question is, is there a reason why we're sticking with an '08 filing? Wouldn't this have expired?
There's no, there's really no statute of limitations for a zoning case. This is when the case was initiated, and that's why I included in there some of our review times. It seems like nothing would happen, and then they'd get cited, so then there'd be some movement on their end. I left it as an '08 case on purpose.
So it was your choice versus the applicant's?
It was my choice.
So there's nothing that's grandfathered because it's an '08? There's nothing that has happened afterwards that doesn't apply?
Um, no, not really. I mean, the only thing that's really changed, which is why urban renewal hasn't had a chance, they weren't on the original referral list because it wasn't an urban renewal area back in 2008.
And the comprehensive plan still applies because we're hearing it now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to clarify one thing in the packet on page three.
Okay.
Under Outline Development Plan, the third sentence, starting with "upon," "upon a permanent development scenario, the applicant must receive approved of a specific..."
Okay, does it cut off?
No, it's just not worded correctly.
Okay.
I want to make sure, well, I want to make sure that, is it approval of or must receive?
It'd be approval of, must receive approval of.
Okay, I read it differently. That's why I was asking.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve?
I just have a couple of questions for staff. The first one is, and this is, these are from the project report. First one on page three regarding the property at 10501 West I-70 Service Road. You mentioned that they're in compliance with the approved FDP and that they did have a new front facade treatment, I assume, building permit for that. And either of those, the approved FDP or the new front facade treatments, did they reference anything about the additional parking lot on Parcel B? According to Wheat Ridge Code, I guess, zoning ordinance, how does that define temporary traditionally? Is there, is there a time limit normally on those?
Typically, we try to build in a, an expiration. Usually, it's on the FDP. The ODP typically runs with the land. It's the zoning piece of it, so it really stays in place forever unless there's some other provision made. We do see time limitations on FDPs, which can expire if they're, if the development isn't developed in accordance with what was approved. But we really, like I say, don't have anything that specifically accommodates interim uses. We do have the ability to grant like a temporary use permit for a year, but obviously, that's not what's intended here.
All right. And then a little bit down on same page, outline development plan. This is actually a question for Public Works, and I'm glad you're here. Says the parking on parcel B was installed without a permit and does not comply with city standards regarding landscaping and stormwater quality and detention. If this were to be approved and this parking lot's made interim or what have you, what exactly would the Public Works requirements be in terms of stormwater quality and detention on both parcels A and parcels B?
The, Tim Pirano, Director of Public Works. The new parking lot would require some detention or water quality areas where the runoff would be trapped in, say, a grass swaled area to try to bring the water into a cleaner condition before it exits the property. That would be about the only thing that would be required because that's the only area that's, that's being improved with the, the new pavement.
And two other questions. Right, you've referenced that the property at 4855 is an illegal, non-conforming use. Just to refresh us, what would it take, according to city regulations, to make it become a legal conforming use?
Okay. Well, the first thing is that they would need to apply for what's called a special use permit. The C1 zoning, as you're aware, is a fairly open zoning classification that allows office service retail. Any sort of auto-related uses are a special use within that zone district. So that includes fast through drive-up windows, car sales, draw on a blank. Anything auto-related typically is a special use. And part of the reason for that is there are potential negative impacts from some of the uses visually, air pollution, those kinds of things. So a special use permit has a specific set of criteria that we use to analyze the appropriateness of the special use, kind of based on design and operation. That's the first thing. There needs to be 20% landscape coverage on the property and in addition, or what could be included in that are 10-foot wide buffer strips along both the frontage road and Miller Street with the planting, irrigated planting of trees, shrubs, and so on, with probably some interior islands.
Two, two more questions. You referenced on again page seven, staff conclusions and recommendation last sentence, the applicant has not indicated a willingness to take that approach, basically referencing a rezoning that included the parcel to the south and brought the entire operation to a higher level of compliance. What is your understanding on why the applicant has not decided to take that approach?
I don't know.
I'll be glad to ask the applicant too.
Okay, that's probably, that's probably a good thing to do. Part of the reason I included the property history was it took really a long time and a lot of court gyrations to get them to pave it. And a very, very difficult working relationship with the tenant and the property owner.
And my final question, if denial is given ultimately, I guess by city council for this, would this then go straight into enforcement? I mean, in terms of the parking that exists on parcels A and B, if this remains in the A1 zone district?
Right. They've been pretty good about keeping the cars off, off the front piece, but the ABRA piece has been used, I don't know for how long, not in compliance. So yeah, we would do code enforcement.
Thank you. No more questions for staff right now.
Just, just one question, Meredith. You mentioned that there is currently no special use permit for vehicle sales. Has the, the property owner or the applicant ever applied for special use permit?
No.
Okay.
We actually met with them in a pre-application situation in 2005 where we advised them that they needed to do that, and they chose not to follow.
Okay.
Which then led to code enforcement action.
Okay, thank you.
George?
I have a couple of questions. One may be simple. The date of the photos in your presentation?
Um, it was within the last month.
And the aerial photo?
Aerial photo is 2008.
You've mentioned storm drainage. I guess I have a question about, the request is for zoning change and the ODP is, I'm confused about the connection between the ODP. If the approval, if we grant approval for the zoning change, that I assume is separate from approval of the ODP, is that a correct assumption?
Well, to, to do a zone, to rezone a property to a plan development, one of the accompanying documents that establishes the uses and the development parameters is the ODP, so they would have to be together.
Together.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit confused then about some of this, there's, you referenced a storm quality letter.
Yes.
From Public Works. However, I look at the drainage plan in the ODP and it does not seem, you know, there's a contributing watershed off of the proposed parking lot into the south lot. That's the way it's drawn right now, you know? So I don't see details that actually show that there's any water quality or detention in the ODP that's part of this submittal.
Okay. And I'd probably defer that question, George, to their engineer who's in the audience.
Thank you.
We did, they did submit something and Public Works reviewed it and was comfortable, but...
So is there Public Works requirements then that need to be met in that letter is referring?
Right. There would have to be improvements made to the property. And I think it was primarily because it was, the increase in imperviousness was less than 10,000 square feet. It's the stormwater only. Does that sound correct, Tim?
Not quite.
Not quite, okay.
Because of the, the amount of new pavement that's being added, they only have to provide water quality treatment. And so the, and I, we didn't bring down the, the letter, and of course, the applicant will have it with them, but they will need to provide that. If it isn't indicated on the current plan that's in front of you, the city would require them to modify their plan before improving the property.
Okay. And I think for right now, this is my last question, that clarification on the enforcement or lack of enforcement for the interim use. So the front cover of the ODP and the report refers to a five or 10-year interim use. The ODP actually specifically states five years.
Okay.
And I'm curious then, for further definition of, of the ability or inability to enforce interim use. What happens after five years?
That's a good question. We would probably cite them into court if, we would notify them that the expiration was impending or had expired, and then proceed with warning violations and notices, summons into court if there was not compliance within X amount of time.
Okay, thanks.
My question is about access.
Sure.
To the parcels. As the ODP is currently drawn, there's, as you stated also, there's no access off of Miller, which means that there's no public right-of-way access to the north lots as it's currently drawn. Now, is it my understanding that there's going to be an easement through the southern lots in, that's going to allow access into those?
That is correct, John. And actually, you know, if, if we proceed through the city council and it will get approved, and I've made a list of conditions that I would add on to that if there were an approval motion, we would require those instruments to be executed and recorded prior to recording of the ODP plan, just because of the whole land lock situation.
Right. So they are separate parcels.
Yes.
They can be bought and sold separately.
Yes.
So providing access from the southern does not guarantee that those pieces will have access at any time in the future, should they be sold separately from the southern parcels, correct?
Well, we would be made a party to the access and we would have to agree to have anything lifted. Those access easements would remain in perpetuity because they'd be recorded. But again, you know, never say never. The city would be a party to those, but I suppose that could happen.
The ODP can be amended, apparently, even after we give approval. Is it, well, I'll ask the applicant.
Okay.
Second question.
Anne?
May I hear your conditions?
Sure. And here, I'll read those off. First one was, prior to recording of the zone change ordinance and ODP Mylar, the legal description be revised to meet current city datum and incorporated. Two is, prior to recording of the ODP Mylar, access easements be created, reviewed, and recorded with reception numbers cited on the ODP document. Three is, prior to recording of the ODP Mylar, the following note should be added, all landscaping shall be served by a fully automatic irrigation system. Four is, prior to the recording of the ODP Mylar, an emergency access be provided to Miller Street. Such access shall be 24 feet in width and be hard surfaced, not road base. And five was that all paving, landscaping, and drainage facilities shall be installed prior to any commercial use on Lot 1.
So the access easement is different than the emergency access point?
Yes.
Item two and item four?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And I've got it.
I know. I just wanted to understand what they were. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions for Meredith? Okay, thank you. And now we'd like to hear from the applicant. If you could please state your name and spell your last name for us, please.
Andy Marner, M-A-R-N-E-R. I reside at 12378 West Aqueduct Drive, Littleton, Colorado.
Great.
My name is Daniel Dearing, D-E-A-R-I-N-G, and I am the applicant.
Great. Okay, please proceed.
I guess I'm, I'm the engineer who's representing the applicant, and I can answer any questions you have regarding the technical aspects of the proposal. So I think if you, if you had questions.
Did you, did you have a presentation you wanted to give before we asked questions? Or are you good with what the city presented?
Do you want to go ahead and? Yes, thank you. Good evening. I guess all in a nutshell, this property that we're applying for the rezoning was, we've had this property for many, a number of years, and we use it for parking for the 10501 West 48th Avenue, the ABRA auto body. And we have tried to use the parcel A for parking, for expansion of the auto lot sales, which is what's caused all this zoning, I guess, change. The city came to us and because we weren't conforming with the zoning and asked us to, to rezone these two parcels. So we've started that process. We've been in it since, I think, 2008. We've spent a lot of money in engineering and drainage and studies and whatnot, and we're, we're asking to pave part of this Lot A. We'll comply with the landscaping, the paving, the lighting. I've got a letter from the police department that they've been out and done a study, and we've discussed this with them on what we might do to enhance the security and the well-being of this property and the community in this area. This is where, we've, we've been going down this road for a few years, and now the planning department's not supporting our zoning changes. So I'm not sure exactly what they want us to put on this land, but the use that I want to use it for is to enhance the two pieces of property to the south that I own. And, you know, my plans aren't to build a hotel on it tomorrow or anything. I, we just need it for parking. If you look at, on, from this aerial, the 10501 property or parcel, there's not hardly any parking for this parcel. So the Lot B is the, the parking that they use for this facility. So if we don't get this zoning, we don't, and we're not allowed to use that parcel A for parking for this ABRA auto body, I mean, that, that company's out of business because unless you want me to park my cars on the frontage road, which I'm sure wouldn't be adequate. I mean, we really need, need to have this parcel for parking for the, for the auto body. And the parcel A, we want to use, enhance, use that to enhance the car sales on 4855 Miller Street. And we're not asking for a lot. We just, you know, I'm a small business owner and a landowner, and we'd like to use these two parcels for parking. I mean, I don't know, you know, what else I can say, but we need to park vehicles on them. On parcel A, we'll do the paving, we'll put in the lighting. We've got, as my engineer can discuss with you, we've done the drainage, we've done the landscape. I mean, I'm, we're here to comply with the city to push the zoning forward and obtain it so that we can use this property. It's currently, yes, it is, as Meredith, if I heard it correctly, stated, it's a slum type of, of property at this time. It is. And we do want to clean it up. We want to remove the outbuildings. We want to put up fencing, lighting, pavement, landscaping. You know, that, you know, that's our, our intent, and, and we want to do that so that we can obtain the zoning for, for our, our use. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
Is Mr. Marner, is there more you'd like to add as far as the presentation goes before we ask questions?
Well, I guess the only, the only thing I could suggest, if I can go, is there, you have the ODP plan in here? It's right there. That's right here? Is this? I don't know if that's going to pull it up. I guess what we, what we show, and this, this goes, relates to the interim use, is, is a limited area, less than 10,000 square feet on parcel A that would be paved for vehicle sales, lighting and, and striping in, in the landscaped area. It's a very flat site. It's not, there's, there's not much fall at all. Fortunately, there is, you know, the area, that, that part of town is, is very, has very porous soils, and what, what we hope to be able to utilize is the, the capacity of the area soils to be able to do a lot of the water quality management with, with a swale that we've got located on the north end there that would collect the water and, you know, let it percolate into the, into the ground. Since it's, since we're limiting this to 10,000 square feet, we don't need to do the full minor and 100-year major storm. In the future, when they do expand the parking, we've got a, and this is not a part of this ODP, but I do have a plan that shows a detention basin on the, on the northwest corner of the, of parcel A there that would, that would be a, basically a retention infiltration basin to, to handle the drainage from the site. to handle the drainage from the site. And, you know, we would also be able to incorporate the existing parking on parcel B at that time as well. And that, as far as the, you know, as far as the drainage and grading goes, I don't, there's really, it's just a parking lot right now, so.
Okay. Questions for the applicant or Mr. Marner?
And I'm sorry, it's Andrew.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just repeat what you said? You said in the future you would propose to put a detention in the northwest corner? Is that right?
Yeah, parcel, parcel A, just that.
Parcel A.
Parcel A there. It would have to be a, you know, a retention infiltration basin because it's so, since there's really no defined outfall for the site, we'd have to be able to incorporate that in the, on the property.
So my question earlier was pointed to the water that is coming off of, you know, at least a few hundred, a thousand feet of that proposed parking lot to the south into the adjacent south. It seems to be the adjacent, am I reading that wrong or is there supposed to be a water quality buffer between those properties?
Well, I guess because of the, because we're only proposing improvements on the parcel A and everything else is existing use, it's treated as existing runoff. And we don't, I guess necessarily do anything special to treat off-site property, but to be able to pass it through.
So water quality in this, I guess goes back to the letter that I don't see, but the water quality device is where in this plan?
It's the swale located on the north portion of the property.
Okay, and so I guess I would infer by the letter indicates that the percolation in that swale meets the requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. What, just out of curiosity, at above 10,000 square feet, what kicks in in terms of compliance issues?
What kicks in is when you increase your runoff greater than 10,000 square feet is you have to do stormwater management as well as the water quality. And that would be for the minor storm, typically a five-year event, and then the major storm, which is a 100-year event. And we do that with a detention basin and we would probably combine that with a retention facility, you know, a retention infiltration basin for this property in order to limit the flows to less than historic rates.
More questions? Ann?
Mr. Deering, I'm going to just dive in and say, and ask, is there a particular reason why all along since 2008 that a special use permit has not been pulled for the 4855?
It's my understanding that we do have one. We've been in business since 2005, I believe, and actually I believe it's been, there's been another car sales lot or business on this site prior to this Wolf Auto Sales. And that, I believe, was obtained in 1987, which is when I first bought the property. So I'm not exactly sure what a special use permit is, but I believe we've had discussion with Meredith over this and that we have that permit and we have a sales tax license. I mean, we're there in business. I'm not sure. I'm a little confused.
So your contention is that the only reason that you haven't requested a special use permit for the property is because you believe that there's one standing right now?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And there's not. We actually talked with Mr. Wolf, who's the tenant in 2005, about expanding the lot and told him he was operating illegally and they needed to come forward with this and no action.
But the question is, Mr. Wolf has no, has no bearing on the property at all, so the conversation should have gone on with Mr. Deering?
The property owner is ultimately responsible.
Okay. Okay, so we've confirmed that there is no special use permit. Was one ever pulled? No. So on the previous car lot?
I don't know about the previous car lot, Dan. That's one of the mysteries, is trying to piece together the history on this thing because I did it back to 2000 and prior to that, let's see, it was a moving company.
And the car lot.
I don't know about the car lot, Dan, I don't. When Mr. Wolf originally approached the city, he asked for office use only. And then it metamorphocized into a vehicle sales lot. And like I say, I wish I had more information, more concrete information to give you, but just our records are not that good. So.
Okay.
I was lucky I came up with what I did, honestly.
Mr. Deering, have you reviewed, I know you just got it short, shortly when the meeting started, but did you review the three-page letter that we received from city staff regarding the history of the?
I have not reviewed that, no, ma'am.
Okay, okay, because I was going to ask you a couple of things on it that had bearing to this.
Go ahead, that'll be fine.
Well, I don't want to catch you unaware, so I'll, I will wait for right now and hear from everybody else and then I'll, I'll come back.
So I guess my, my major question is, it seems to me that the easy way to take, we're a little hung up by the fact that it's an illegal nonconformity, or at least I am, and that it could easily be taken care of by getting a special use permit and doing the two rear lots as C1 and include the special use permit with that. And so I'm wondering how come you've decided not to take that route, which would seem the much easier route, and it certainly for us would be the much easier route. I realize it's not up to making it easy for us, but that seems to be the way to get through this a little bit more quickly. Is Meredith?
One of the complications that is hard to deal with this kind of situation is per the zoning code right now, any zone change to commercial has to be a PCD. So we can't even zone the north piece. Logically, we would come in, rezone the north piece and then do an SUP for all of it. We can't even do that because of the way the zoning code is written right now. We're trying to change that, but they have very limited options as far as rezoning because of that law in place.
Okay, so the best-case scenario would be a special use permit on the 4855 lot and then go with the development, the planned development on the two rear lots. Is that?
Or just zone the three lots, PCD, leave, yeah, that's.
Right, or do the three lots, PCD, okay. Excuse me. Okay, so I guess my major question then is why you've decided not to go that route and try and run, because the ODP leaves a great deal up in the air as far as we're concerned. We lose control, if that's not quite the right word, but we lose the ability to know what's going to happen with those pieces of land, which makes planning for us very difficult. And so it would be much better as far as we're concerned to go the other route. So I'm wondering why you didn't decide to do that? That's the long way of doing it.
Well, first of all, the zoning change, or the, what we've submitted for zoning change is 4859 Miller, not 4855 Miller. In my eyes, it doesn't have anything to do with 4859 Miller. It's just, it's a property that's adjacent to this one. I don't, and I, if you can help me understand, I don't understand why, just because I'm the owner of both parcels, if I want to rezone one, why do I have to bring the other one into the zoning change? That makes no sense to me.
Okay. Fair question, and I asked, I asked the same thing because it, they don't, they shouldn't necessarily have to go together, so.
In my, in my eyes, and I may be wrong, but the city has plans to take Miller Street and turn, put a turn lane in there so that the traffic turns to the west on the I-70 frontage road. And by making me put the southern piece, 4855 Miller Street, in this zone change, they want to take a right away from me, which is an enormous amount of ground. And that's not going to happen today, but it is going to happen. And if they make me put 4855, the southern piece, east, the southeast.
Car lot.
The car lot, okay. They want me to throw this in there so that they can take my frontage from me at no charge, which Meredith has told me that already. So, and I, I'm, obviously I'm a landowner. I don't want to give up any land that I'm.
That you bought.
I shouldn't say that I bought. You're absolutely right. So why is that piece of ground have anything to do with zoning 4859 Miller Street? It just doesn't make any sense to me. Why don't we throw the zoning to the parcel to the north, to the office warehouse? Just because I'm the owner of both parcels, is that why they want me to put this in there? I don't understand. I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so if you, if you split the two apart from each other, then in essence what you're asking us to do is to approve zoning from an agricultural to a vacant lot with some asphalt on it?
And car parking.
Asphalt with car parking.
Okay, yes, sir.
And?
And the piece to the west.
Right, and the piece to the west, which already has, which is going to not change at all.
Yeah, I mean, that.
Correct.
That's pretty much, yes, sir.
Right. So part of our process in evaluating that is the criteria that we're sort of held to, which includes whether or not there's going to be any increased value to the city, is there going to be any increased opportunity for employment? I think Meredith went through most of those. And if you split the two lots apart from each other and just consider parcels A and B, then they don't meet almost any of those criteria, I think is the problem for us. And so at least for me, that was the reason that I was trying to consider the two together because you get some benefit from having the two of them together and you get no benefit from having the two of them apart as far as the criteria go that we are supposed to consider. So that was why I was trying to find out why you wouldn't go ahead and do the zoning in the other matter, so.
And we have had discussion with Meredith and her staff on the 4855 parcel over the past couple of years or whatnot. Don't have the exact dates, but it's been quite some time in which we, the car sales lot had recycled asphalt down for surface. And the city came and said that that's not legal and we, we thought that it was and we bantered back and forth, but we succumbed to them and said, okay, we'll pave it. And we did. We lit it and whatnot. We put in landscaping, I don't know what you call the setback for the cars. I mean, granted, I haven't been there lately, maybe some of the landscaping has died. If that's an issue, we'll take care of it. I don't have a problem with that at all. But they, the city, signed off on, well, I can't say signed off, but gave us an approval, a verbal approval, if not signing off, on that we met all the criterias on the 4855 lot. Now they're saying we don't, so, I mean, I don't want to, not to continue an argument, but.
Right, right, no, I understand. Right, yeah, I understand and I, yeah, and I'd rather not.
Couple things. Dan, first, we write about the issue right away on this southern lot, which when we went in 2005, this is one of the things that they were told, is that we are looking for improvements. And I'm going to have to walk this around, I don't have multiple copies. So here's Miller, this is where it is. So what Public Works was requesting is in order to do improvements to the frontage road, that there would be a reservation made. And then we come to find out, hopefully we might have money this year where we could have built it. But again, this is the car lot and you see, they want a big swath.
And so it's all the way to that?
I believe that's.
To the blue?
So there would be a large reservation right away. So here's the car lot, so it's this, I believe it's that blue line, the radius of the car lot.
While they're looking at that, can I ask you one more question?
Yes, sir.
As you probably understood, one of my issues with this is access to those rear lots because they could be sold separately. And so what I was wondering is if you would be willing to amend your ODP before it gets final approval to have access off of Miller Street to the rear, to the parcel A through to parcel B?
To, yeah, would we, access from Miller to parcel A, which would be on the northeast corner, is that's what you're asking me?
Oh, yeah, then it takes them over the 10,000.
Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I.
You're asking for the access at the northeast corner of parcel A from Miller?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be in the northeast corner because that's where your detention is, so you couldn't put it through there.
Well, access to A from Miller would not be any problem at all. I'd have no reservations with that. For parcel B, the access as, maybe it's not, I guess, a legal access, but the access to that is to the 10501 property. And that would, that would be where we'd want to have the access to that because the 10501 property is the one that's using the parcel B. It must use that parcel. If that, if, we aren't allowed to have the zoning to park cars back there for this auto body place, they're done, they're out of business. And they generate millions of dollars in sales annually, which is taxable to the city. So we could give access from B through 10501, which would ultimately come out onto the I-70 frontage road.
Right, so an easement through there.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem at all, no.
I don't have anything else, sorry.
And I'd like to add, if you don't mind, the car sales lot over the past many years has had, and also the auto body, I used to own the auto body business. I sold it to Abra, which is a big, bigger corporation. But I didn't have any problems years ago, but over the, probably the past 10 years, the crime, I guess, that I would call crime rate has just skyrocketed in this area. And I think it's due to the deteriorating customer base at the American Motel. Not that I want to peg them, but I believe that's probably where most of it comes from. And they, they come in through this parcel A and B and loot all the cars behind Abra, which is B. They, Wolf Auto Sales has lost 20 cars in the last year, plus dozens and dozens of tires and stereos, and they just ransacked this property. So I had a meeting with the Police Crime Prevention and they did a survey for us and with Officer Betsy Saylor, and we talked about if we could, what we're proposing, which is the paving, fencing, landscaping, and lighting, which is the probably the, one of the most important things, to get this thing all lit up and security cameras and whatnot to deter the thieves to coming on either of these, all four of these parcels. And, I mean, and so the city, the police department was in favor of what we're discussing or applying for the city for zoning because it's going to be, I can't even tell you how many police calls that they get on these properties, so it's going to reduce their exposure and whatnot. So they're, it's my understanding that they're in favor of this. Thank you.
Any more questions? Yeah, Steve?
Couple of questions. You've owned this property, are all?
You, you've owned this property, or all four of these parcels, is that right, since '87, or you said approximately?
Uh, well, I've owned 10501's, I believe, I, I'm, my dates might be a little bit off, but I bought 10501 in 1987, and then I bought 4859 Miller a few years later, and then a few years after that, I bought parcel A and B, which is 4859 Miller. That's how-
And you currently, you, you lease both of these southern businesses?
I do, sir.
Okay. And then, is there a residence in parcel A? Is there someone living in that house currently?
No, it's, it's part of the old farmhouse. There, there was two farmhouses.
Okay.
One we've tore down, and we got a permit to tear that down years, several years ago. Um, the one that's still standing, it's probably 20-foot square. It was just a little teeny, it was initially a chicken house years ago, but we're, we're going to ta, we're going to remove that. And then the other, the longer outbuilding that you see on parcel A was the old ba, uh, barn for this agricultural land. We're going to remove that as well.
Um, so, you, you originally owned the building at 10501, or you still own it, but you, that was originally your business?
Yes, sir.
And then you subsequently sold it to Abra, who's running a sort of business there?
They're the leasing, yes.
Um, and when was that building just constructed and just kind of approximately?
Uh, yeah, early '70s, probably. And then we just did an update on it this year, I believe, first of this year, last, last of last year, December, January, February.
And was it built for, to be an auto repair type of business?
It was originally, well, I can't say originally, but when I purchased it, it was a camper sales facility. They sold pull trailer campers and manufactured them there as well. And also on 4855 Miller, they also manufactured hot tubs at that time. That's many years ago. But, and they, and it was a sales and a manufacturer on that piece of ground.
When, um, regarding parcel B, were you aware that, that parking, overflow parking was not allowed in an agricultural zone district?
No, it was not.
You were not, okay.
Did, I've been enlightened on that now, yes.
Um, and also, I guess, for parcel A, right, that's not overflow for them, okay? I understand your, your rationale for, for not wanting to include 4855 in, in the plating, for that, you don't want to lose that dedication initially. I still have some concerns, though, about the, the makeup of parcel A and parcel B in terms of, I understand that you inherited it that way, and you bought it that way. Why wouldn't you want to remove, I guess, that, that lot line that separates parcels A and parcels B into, into one lot? I think that would be more, that would make, make your property more valuable and easier to perhaps develop or sell down the road, et cetera, like that, without influencing any type of Miller, I-70 frontage road dedication? Has that been discussed or considered?
No, no, sir, hasn't. I haven't even thought about that. I don't, didn't know that that would be an issue, but it's certainly something to consider.
Um, and then what, just, you have any idea, you have no intention to sell, I imagine, any of these right now?
Well, now, you know, Abra, they've got two 20-year leases, well, a 20-year lease with an option, so they're going to be there a long time. That's how I make my living. Uh, Wolf Auto Sales has a long-term lease. They're going to be there for quite some time. That's also income to me. Um, you know, we're trying to enhance the lot A and B, clean it up, you know, do whatever's necessary to make it, uh, it isn't going to generate any, um, sales per se, or revenue to the city, other than expanding the car lot on B will, could be job enhancement. Um, I mean, we're willing to do what we need to do to, to A and B as far as landscape and drainage and all that. I think we've addressed all that stuff. I, I just don't understand what-
Do you?
You know, in my eyes, they want us to put up a, some big retail center or something. I, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't understand.
I mean, you have no intentions at this time to develop parcels A and B, other than for parking?
No, sir, no, no.
You don't have another building?
No, you know, actually, my thought pattern over the last 22 years of, of, uh, purchasing these four lots was that someday, if I keep them all together, someday down the future, I could sell them to, you know, uh, some, some, somebody that would develop it. But I have no intention to develop it. I, I can't afford to develop it at this time, so.
I, I guess my biggest concern is, is several, but one is, I guess I don't see what's occurring or what you're proposing on parcels A and parcel B to be a temporary or interim. If you've got, in fact, two 20-year leases with Abra, I don't see them, and you've said that, that parcel B parking's necessary for 10501 to operate. I guess I don't see that parking going away anytime soon. What I would rather see on parcel B and more a client to approve would be some type of full-blown development for parcel A and parcel B, even if that's just parking, but, but utilizing the entire site and being laid out appropriately in terms of drainage, parking, lighting, landscaping. And I'm scared or nervous that what we see here is, we see half of the pieces. Over time, it will creep north, and, and it's going to be an ongoing, I guess, give you a call, right, why is this being done? And I guess I'd like to see this done a little bit more comprehensively, and I think that'd be better for your properties to bring up the value, to bring up your revenues, but also just the neighborhood, and it's just a better planning principle. So, that's, that's my, kind of my concern, is, is just planning or developing half at a time seems a little bit, um, I guess I have some concerns about that on a temporary basis. I see it more, from what you've described and what we've seen here, more longer term, and I think we need to look at it from a longer-term perspective, I guess. That's just, that's just my thoughts on that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Mark, do you have a question? Um, I just have one question, kind of along the same lines with Steve's saying. If, if we're talking right now about interim use, all this talk about interim use, why not, you know, what, what's your thinking, uh, regarding not going for just a, you know, permanent, permanent development? And, you know, why, why all the language about interim use?
I think that the, one of the, the, uh, drivers on the interim use was in order to get, uh, get as, as much bang for the buck, so to speak, in order to get, because right now, especially on, on use area, or parcel A, uh, I know Dan would like to lease that to Phil Wolf, and Phil Wolf would like to lease it from him, but he can't until this is, zoning's approved. And, and in that case, then he could lease that space and start generating revenue off that. And in order to, in order to, to be able to get, um, to that point, we limited the, the amount of area in order to make it feasible to construct the improvements at this time. You know, just a dollars and cents type calculus on that.
Okay. Did you guys have more questions? Okay. Um, so, in, just add one more thing that just occurred to me. So, in terms of the, the crime study that, that you conducted, or the police conducted, uh, on your property, all the talk about how people coming through parcel B, parcel A, causing property destruction, how lighting both of those parcels would reduce the crime rate. If we're talking about this, this interim use plan here, you know, there's only lighting indicated on the, you know, extreme western portion of that parcel A. And I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, if, if, to, to know if crime, if, if crime prevention and, you know, avoidance of destruction of the property over on parcel B and in parcel A is a, is a driver and an issue for, for the development, why not, why not plan in some more lighting and improvements over on the parcel B property as well, in order to mitigate some of those concerns you have about crime?
Parcel B is lit from the north side of the 10501 building. There's, we've put, uh, many lights up there that probably shine out at a certain degree, and, and they light, that's lit. Now, the dirt is not lit, that is correct. Um, but that is lit, as of now. The parcel A, there's no lighting on that, yes. We proposed to put some on there. We, we, we've asked to light just the amount that we want to pave, um, just because that's the way we intended to do it. I mean, if there's an issue with it or something, we can address it.
I was, I was just, I was just curious if, you know, just in relation to your, your comments about the crime being an issue and lighting being a mitigating factor for that.
I think, I think by, in my eyes, to just scrape this thing and clean it all up, put landscaping in, put, uh, the lighting in that we were asking for, uh, fencing along the north side. We've already done some fencing on the north, uh, property line, uh, bollards and stuff on the east side of 4855, and, you know, just to generally clean the darn thing up. It just, it is an eyesore, I do agree with that. I think if we clean it up, light it, get some landscaping to look like somebody's there, you know, doing business, that'll, hopefully, will deter some of this theft.
Okay. Um, is there no more questions for, yeah, Mark, do you have something?
Is there a, a certain number of parking spots that are being designated here, or is it the square footage of, of the paint area?
Well, it's the square footage that we have on there, but we do show, um, I'd have to count them up and see what they are. You know, we just show a standard, uh, since it's car sales, it's not really like, uh, it's a parking lot where people are going to be, you know, it would just be employees moving the cars around.
I thought I heard that the fire department was going to require a 24-foot easement, and that's going to substantially change the layout of that.
Well, it will require some modification, but I mean, I guess I see just a, a pay area that goes out to Miller that's probably gated, so we, so people can't regular, maybe do this, so, so that would change it, right?
Yeah, I think that the emergency access would be different than the regular access, because I don't think they want, you know, from the business standpoint, they don't want people coming in that way. That would just be a-
I understand it'd be gated, but it'd still have to be clear for the fire department.
Sure.
And, and likewise, is, is there an easement being granted from parcel B to 10501?
They are showing an access, which would have to be secured and recorded if things are approved.
That, that's typically done with a separate instrument, because the ODP usually can't-
Not that.
It's not a, it's not a plat, so it's, it's a zone document. It, it doesn't, you can't cha, you know, use that to transfer property rights. But we do a separate instrument, and that would, you know, all that, I think all the, the conditions that Meredith put out, I don't think the applicant has any issues. You know, if you approve it, those conditions as far as recording the easements and, you know, irrigating the landscaping, and, you know, we don't have a problem with that.
Ann?
Mr. Dearing, I have one other question, and I apologize if this is repeating. I understand your concerns about going with a PCD, because then that opens up the, um, ability of the city to take some property for the XL lane off of Miller. Um, were you told that that would be the same case if you got a SUP, a special use permit?
I, I'm, I don't know, I, was, did you tell me that?
Yeah.
I don't know, we, this.
Um, yes, that was part of the discussion when we talked in 2005. I think that's when this drawing was made. So, whether he gets a special use permit or a PCD, which involves three, uh, 4855 and parcel A and B of 4859, it opens him up- That is correct. On both of them. Mm-hmm. Even with the special use permit? Yes. Right, Tim? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Thanks very much for answering our questions-
Thank you, pleasure.
-for telling us what you know. We appreciate it. Um, at this time, other folks. Yeah, we'd like to open up the, uh, discussion for anyone else who would like to come talk. Meredith, do we have anyone signed in who'd like to, uh?
Do you have any more folks signed up to speak?
Great. And Mr. Marner, we've got, we've al, we've already heard from you. Uh, Mr. Phil Wolf, would, is there something you'd like to say? Please come on up. If you can just give us your full name, address, and spell your last name for us.
Phil Wolf, good evening, guys. W-O-L-F. I have to echo Dan, I think, in some of the same, I can't speak to the zoning or the, I'm not the property owner, but, um, he had mentioned the vehicles that we've lost, uh, it wasn't over the last year, but it's been over the last 10 years. I've been there since August of 2000. I had a permit in August of 2000. So, today, speaking with Dan and the engineer, is the first time I knew about an illegal business in 10 years. And we've had many discussions with, um, Meredith regarding multiple issues, and, uh, so this is kind of news to me tonight. But, um, we have, um, eight other locations scattered around the country, and when I have a permit for a business and a location, I'm legal and there, it's overdone, you know, we've conformed previously, or we are not, you know, allowed to be there. So, this, like I say, this is really news to me. The issue with our theft is really a problem. Several years ago, we had so many vehicles that we got stolen, um, we started putting big boulders up there and fences and whatnot, and we'd do a lot of trucks and the lifted kind of things, and we were coming in, and these boulders were in the street. I mean, these guys would, would go over top of rocks, they'd break fences off. So, we decided to put cameras up. And then all we do is we see where they're coming and going. We, we, we camera the building, and we're seeing they come in off of the backlot. And I think part of, part of the problem is there's no light to Miller Street, and I don't think you have to get that, you know, that far back from Miller Street with some security and some lights to stop the theft problem. Uh, for a while, that backlot was open, and, and, you know, Wheat Ridge PD would have their, their cruisers in the back, and, and they would, they would observe the motel and, and the car lot, and, uh, that just didn't suffice. We just kept losing vehicles. To date, I've lost $46,000 in accessories. You know, what's under my insurance? 20 vehicles we've lost. I can't, I can't afford that, guys. I don't know about how anybody else's businesses run, uh, but it's expensive to be at that location and, and feel like I'm a, a junkyard. People come in and take whatever they will. So, the cameras only told us where the, the traffic was coming from. We could see them parking out on Miller Street, um, once in a while, they'd come in off of Abra, and they would, they would cruise the lot, and they'd go back in their car, and then we saw them come back in off of Miller Street. So, it's like they'd case us, and that's where they always go. I don't know what can be done with police. I've, I've begged for Mr. DeTallio to call me for 10 years, not one phone call, not one phone call to date. I've begged him to call and, can we get some help on, on theft control? Wheat Ridge PD has, has done as best as they can with, with the officers that they have. Uh, so this theft thing is a real problem, and that backlot is, is a real problem. So, I think lighting and, uh, you know, like Dan says, you know, we, we can only afford to do so much, because, you know, I know the cost trickles downhill. This is not the best of times to be in the automobile business and try to spend money. It's, it's a tough time, but we're just trying to stay open. You know, in, in, in this high-density fancy building things that I've seen around the Target and these different facilities there, you know, they're fancy, and they're pretty, and they're empty. So, what does that do for the city? See, we, we're trying to keep the same, so we can stay in business, and common sense has got to prevail in business. And, uh, so I, you know, it's just, it's just a plea from a, a small businessman, it's like, we, we got it, we're trying to stay open. And I can't concur any more than I can with Dan. Cost plays a big part of this thing, and we, we got to try to stop the bleeding. Uh, and, and this illegal thing, use-wise, this is news to me. I've been there since August of 2000, and, uh, I got a permit since that day, so. We've had discussions about paving and different things that we didn't agree upon, that we didn't think that it was applicable, and, uh, so there's been delays in, in conforming. I don't think it's applicable to this day, if I read the laws and the codes, but we did, you know? Um, plants are hard to keep alive out there, you know, with the salt in the streets and the snow plows, and, you know, we'll, we'll stick some more plants in the ground, and hopefully we can keep them alive. So, these are, these are things we'll continue to try to, you know, do the best we can with, but it's kind of all I have to say.
Do you have questions for Mr. Wolf? Ann?
Good evening. Um, were you able to look at the memorandum? Did you have a chance to look at the memorandum?
No, ma'am.
Um, I just want to ask, because it was part of the record, so I, it states that in 2005, even though you're not the property owner, the city personnel met with you, and you were informed that-
were informed that you needed a special use permit to expand the car lot sales, car sales lot, and allow auto service on 4855, and then again in 2007. But your, your standing is that you were never told until now that you need a special use permit?
I've paid several fines to the city for not complying, and I am not without a doubt that if we didn't comply, I would've been fined and paid again. And never, ever, has there been a cease or desist, or an order to pay for noncompliance, except for the issues that we've dealt with, which has been...
That's because after three years of negotiating, that was something we negotiated through the court system. And he finally agreed to pave after, how many hours did I spend in court?
Those were the issues, Meredith, nothing else. Nothing else.
No.
Paving, well, I disagree. Now, I'll never call anybody a liar, but I'm gonna tell ya, if this, if this city has an issue with anybody in the city, they will tell them and collect the money. I know that. I've been doing this for 40-plus years, so I'm not in doubt about that.
So, I'm sorry. I just wanted to be clear. So your standing is that based on what we're showing here, it's incorrect, and you weren't told that you required a special use permit for 4855 in order to have the car sales and the auto service, repair, and maintenance?
Well, I don't have an auto service, repair, and maintenance, but, but Dan, you've been involved in those meetings. Am I, am I misreading you? I mean, is this new to you, as it was, we talked today earlier? Okay.
Okay. I just, I just have a question about the business. The 2008 picture shows a very busy car lot. Do you need that additional parcel A for additional sales, or just parking of, are you using parcel A just for additional car sales? Is that...
Well, in our business, you know, you need very little facility and more outside space, because that's what takes up the space. So obviously, the more, it's not like, it's not like a Target where you have all interior space, but the more things you have, naturally, you can do more business. We can hire more people, we can create greater revenue. So it kinda goes hand in hand. We do need, we do need the space. You know, we jam cars in there, and that's our choosing, naturally, not, you know, we try to maximize the space we have. It's a problem with snowplows and whatever, you know, but, so yes, it does increase business, and we could use additional space, no question about it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Additional questions for Mr. Wolf? Steve?
Just one question, please. Regarding the expansion onto parcel A, the pros with the possibility of using parcel A in the future for additional storage outweighs the cons associated with the crime that's associated with this lot, I guess. That's my question for you. You, as a business user for this, view that parcel A expansion would be more beneficial to your business, considering all the other cons, et cetera, et cetera, that you preference?
Yeah, there's no question about it. If you have a chance to increase revenue, you'll get a chance to offset the losses. I mean, if I just stayed, you know, to zero right now, or equal to where I'm at currently, but we believe it would deter it, plus additional business, so absolutely. There's no question about that. The pros outweigh the cons.
Have you seen, in general, since you've been in operation since 2000, seen your business increase, I guess? Obviously, there must be some, if you're looking at expanding to parcel A.
Well, we started out small. You know, it's a small, you know, it's our smallest location, and you always try to be able to service, you know, service more people. There was good growth in, you know, through, through 2008. I should say, good demand. You know, we've been limited by automobiles, and that's every, every automobility, there's a problem. But, yeah, there's, there's growth, and there's a demand, and used cars are interpremium now with the cash, the cash for the clunkers thing, it's just dried up the used car market. So people are spending more on used than they are new. So, yeah, there's, there's a, there's a demand for quality used cars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any more questions for Mr. Wolf? No? Okay. We have Mr. Wayne Means.
One thing in defense of myself, I have a letter here dated May 2007 to Mr. Wolf, where I remind him about our 2005 meeting where he was told that he needed an SUP for the car business, and I repeated it, and I've got it right here. Now, he might not have picked it up, because he would refuse being served, any sort of certified mail, but I, I just feel like I need to defend myself.
Can I just camera that? That was relating to the paving?
No, it was not.
That was the whole certain level, and only the question we had about paving and law.
I actually have myself one question for you, Mr. Wolf. If, if it turns out that you do need to get a special use permit, if it, if it turns out that you do, you do not in fact have one, is, and in order to proceed with, to bring your, the lot into compliance with zoning, is that something you would agree to do, to get that special use permit?
Well, I think it's legal, but, and so, I think it's only for...
Okay. Okay, we have, can you, could you come back up to the podium? We've got just a couple more questions for you. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Wolf. Actually, I'm curious when your current lease expires.
We've got a couple of four-year extensions. I think, I think we're eight to 10 years, I believe, or something in that order.
Yeah. So you're, you're eight to 10 years out?
I believe that's pretty accurate, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Wolf? All right. Thank you. Are there any more? Is there anyone else not on the lister who would like to come speak? We'll close that portion of the hearing and open up some discussion.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions of staff again.
Great.
So can we open the public hearing back up again?
Sure. Let's reopen it. Staff?
Is that okay? I had a question. If, if, remind me, Meredith, I have lapsed on my PCD knowledge. If a PCD is pulled on these three, 4855 and parcel A and B of 4859, are the lots tied together forever, or can they be sold separately?
I would, I would have to think about that. It would depend on how they were used. Obviously, the access is a concern, and we would not want to landlock a property.
Understood.
So we would need proper recorded instruments. Probably the one that would be most affected as far as access is the one behind Abra.
And, understand, I'm not trying to design at the dais.
It is.
Okay. I don't do that, but I just had to ask, for the benefit of everybody's understanding, what would happen if they, they were PCD together? And then I just have a question. Explain to me why a special use permit opens, if you, in other words, if you touch 4855 at all, it's gonna open up to take, take the land for the...
Well, I'll start, and then Tim can probably jump in. It's a land use entitlement. It's entitling somebody to use the land in a special way, and by, the requirement for land dedication usually occurs at the subdivision process. There's also a catch-all provision in the zoning code that says, we can require dedication at building permit, at special use approval, at plating, at zone change. And that's our policy, is we do an analysis of a need, and then we can require the exaction anytime there's any request for approval of anything.
And the only thing that I would add is that it can be provided by dedication, or we could recommend a reserve. So it could be that that little strip of land, and it's not all that large, could be reserved for future city use, and it would be up to the approval bodies, which would be the city council, to make that final determination as to whether they would extract the, the right-of-way at the time of SUP, or just have that property held in reserve so that it could be purchased at a later time when it was needed for the street.
And then, if, if, in my nice little colored copy, I have this strip of blue, which means this is PID, correct?
Technically, it is. It was originally part of the Becker Industrial Park, which was how the property was titled when Dan purchased it, and it was for additional parking. And so, I don't know where I'm going with this, just that it's a parking, it's, it was parking, it's still parking, now used by Mr. Wolf.
Okay, but it's, it's actually zoned PID as part of 10501. I'm splitting the baby here.
I know. It's not that easy with this.
Okay. Okay. So the zoning of that strip of blue as PID, does that go to 10501, or does that go to 4855?
Well, it's part of the, it's part of the Becker Industrial Park, which is the property to the west. I don't know how the ownership reads. They're all owned by the Deering...
Agreed. But I'm just looking at the PID and that strip of, of blue. So the PCD, if there were a PCD pulled on 4855 and parcel A and B of 4859, it would not necessarily include the strip of blue?
We would recommend that be included. It's used by Mr. Wolf, it's been used by Mr. ...
Okay.
Forever and ever. It should be included with the entire zone change.
I understand, but I'm, I'm still trying to, now I'm designing on the dais, the, the XL lane. That's all.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions for staff? More questions for staff? Okay.
Is Dick coming back, or are we gonna...
He's not feeling well.
Dick is not coming back?
He's not feeling well, so I'll, I'll...
Carry forth?
I'll carry forth as the chair for tonight. Okay, well, if there are no more questions for staff, let me see if I have any additional questions. Okay. No. Okay, well, then I will reclose the public portion of the meeting and open it up for discussion.
Point of order.
Yes, sorry.
Point of order. Meredith, you need to enter in that map that you showed into the, into the record. It wasn't entered in.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
So, entering into the record, the right-of-way reservation map.
At this point, well, I can't make the motion, but...
Can I make a motion that we recess for like 10 minutes and take, before we come back? Is that, is that, is everybody okay with that? Yes?
I'd second it. Sounds good. We'll recess for 10 minutes.
We don't need to vote. We just...[1416.51]
So I'm going to reconvene our meeting and open it up to discussion.
Well, this is difficult, and there's a couple of things that are on my mind in going through this. And I appreciate the input. Mr. Deering pointed to the concept of separation. There's two concepts that I'm having a trouble with right now. One is separation, the idea that parcel A and B could be separated from 4855 and from 10501, which I think on the face of it is a true statement. However, everything really points to connection, actually. Connecting a use north of 4855 for, I think, what is a reasonable expansion of services into parcel A, and obviously, an existing use already that's projected from the 10501 into parcel B. So, I mean, really, there's connection happening here. So I can't get behind the logic of that this ought to be separated because, in fact, it's, we're really talking about some connection issues. The other problem I think I have is what is now on the documents here related to interim use, five-year use, but it appears that, unless I'm hearing wrong, that the comments and the intended uses, including the lease agreements and the business arrangements that are currently established right now, actually point to more than an interim use. And so I'm not comfortable with what's on these documents from that standpoint. If I may, I'd be more comfortable if there was, you know, a resolution and compliance on the parking lot in parcel B. And that does not seem to be addressed in this document, and I'm sure there's a reason why. It probably doesn't have to be addressed, but I'm uncomfortable with the fact that it's not. And, you know, obviously, I think it would make more sense, again, and this is probably not a requirement, but it would be more, make more sense for the landscape moves that are happening on parcel A, or at least designed in this, to move down to the south in terms of that connected use. So as it stands, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the document because it is not really separate. It's connecting, and it doesn't also appear to be an interim use, which concerns me. So that's just my initial comments.
More comments? Discussion? John?
First, I have the same problems that I think George does. And then to go on beyond that, if I do allow myself to consider them separately, and I take into account the criteria that we have to evaluate the zoning change on, we're basically being asked to agree to a zoning change to a partially paved vacant lot, which doesn't really meet the criteria that we're supposed to be using to evaluate the zone change. So that's actually a bigger problem, really, than if they're connected, in my mind. I think I'd be more, I now more fully understand and appreciate the reasons why the applicant has chosen to go the route that he's chosen. I find myself to be more sympathetic to his reasoning than I was perhaps when I initially read the packet. Having said that, because there is a connection between the two lots, I'm having a tough time agreeing that the zoning change is in the best benefit of the city and of planning in general, as opposed to being to the benefit of the landowner, per se.
Anyone? I'd like to echo both of your comments. Just, you know, I, as a small business owner, I understand the concern for maximizing impact and minimizing cost. You know, why not try to get, you know, maximum benefit at, you know, the least amount of cost? And so I understand the, you know, some of the reasoning that I heard tonight about, you know, only developing a certain portion of it. But at the same time, you know, these parcels are so, already so connected, and to treat them so separately, to not consider a more integrated approach, especially keeping in mind future development down the road, the fact that these leases are already, you know, going out past that interim use, that five-year timeframe that's discussed in the interim use language, and that, you know, that parcel B is sitting out there in the corner, I would be worried about access issues if, say, for example, it remained separate and was sold off separately. You know, even with an easement, you start to create those little, you know, sort of fly-glot issues and stuff, you know, down the road, which we then have to deal with, you know, 20 years later. So that's what I have to say. Any other comments before we stop?
I have one more question to the city. Can you explain, I'm sorry. What are the requirements for getting a business license in the city?
They make application through sales tax, and then it is routed up to planning, for planning review and building review. And if we determine that everything is met, then we can issue it. Now, I know there might be some conflict with what you've seen and hear.
Yes.
And I don't want to continue on with the name-calling or anything, but looking over some of the documents, I think there was some misrepresentation on some of the business licenses that were, one of them, I think the one in 2000 was supposed to be for, and I don't have it in front of me, so, but I know at one point it was indicated that it was office use only. And so I don't know if, without going back through those documents, what exactly it looked like, but when I look back through my file, it would have appeared that there was some, perhaps some misrepresentation.
So I'm gonna, this is my, okay, thank you. This is my own assumption, but I'm going to assume that the business license renewal form that was submitted in July, January 11th of 2007 was accepted, and therefore we are accepting taxes and we are getting everything from the business, which means it did go before planning for approval. Okay. Thanks. So I have some very brief comments. I am also enlightened about why the applicant doesn't want to do the SUP. I understand the concerns about the potential for the reservation in the road. I understand that now, and that clarifies a lot for me. I am concerned about the clear difference between the applicant and his, who's, the business who's leasing the property versus the city on what has happened. That is more disturbing to me than anything else because I can't reconcile that. I can reconcile comprehensive plan, and I can reconcile a bunch of other stuff, but I can't reconcile the difference between what we have in our case packet now, officially in our case packet, as far as property history and what the applicant and his tenant are stating. So those are my biggest concerns. Everything else I can address one way or the other. I'm not going to design at the dais, even though I started doing that. My apologies. So I guess we'll know when we push the button.
Are we ready to entertain a motion? I'm sorry, is the chair, I should say, if there is no discussion, we're ready to entertain a motion.
I'll just, I'm going to just throw it out there. I move to recommend denial of case number WZ-08-05, a request for approval of a zone change from A1 Agriculture 1 to PCD Planned Commercial Development, and approval of a conceptual outline development plan for property located at 4859 Miller Street for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning would effectively allow the expansion of an illegal, non-conforming use. The city's zoning and development code does not make allowances for interim uses, and there will be minimal economic benefits to the city. I've purposely dropped off number two.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Further discussion?
I made the motion, but I'm probably going to vote no. I, I'm going to vote no. So, but I, somebody had to make the motion, I made the motion. So I'm just telling you.
Okay.
Can I just ask for clarification on why Commissioner Brinkman left out number two?
It seemed very subjective. There's not a measurement that I could apply to it versus something I can point to.
Okay. All right. There's no more discussion?
Then a positive, a green vote means for denial?
Yes.
Okay.
Positive vote is for denial, negative vote is for rejection of the motion. Okay. Let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes with Commissioner Brinkman voting opposed.
Okay. Are there any other items that anyone needs to discuss?
Just a couple, or at least a date or two that you might be interested in. Last night and tonight were the first two sessions we had regarding the bike and PED master plan, the second phase of that. We have additional meetings next Wednesday and Thursday, the 20th and 21st. Tim?
Yes, and they're at the Rec Center between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock. We invite everyone in the city. They are specific to districts three and four, but everybody's welcome to come, and we are going to be talking about the entire plan.
Great. Okay. Well, if there's no other items, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.